Welcome to the first meeting of the planning board in the year 2018. Before we begin with this evening's agenda, I ask that you all please rise and join us in submitting the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Before we proceed with this evening's agenda, there are two organizational items that we customarily do, the first meeting of each year, and the first on the agenda is the appointment of a vice chair, and it's my pleasure to appoint, reappoint Thomas Underzak of Kings Park to be vice chairman of the board. Next item on the agenda will be the appointment of council, and I believe this year we, or the past year, we've been served well by our council, Paul Sabatino of Kings Park. It is my pleasure to place, or make a motion to reappoint Paul Sabatino as council to the Smithtown Planning Board. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations on your reappointment, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all members, appreciate very much.
We appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you.
At this time, the chair recognizes planner Matthew Collado for the reading of items that the planning department recommends we adjourn this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. The planning department recommends the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number three, 2012-04, Storybook Homes in Wisconsin, number four, 2012-02, Carlson Associates, Kings Park, number five, 2010-06, KVC Holdings, under waiver request, six, number 773, Scholar States Comac, seven, number 1135, To Amity Place, St. James, eight, 911A, Glenholme Northern, St. James, under 288 application, Lisetta Street, and under final subdivision, number 1136, Map of Open Meadow.
Is there anyone present here this evening who wishes to be heard on the items recommended to be recessed?
If you are, come up to the mic, please.
Just come up, give your name, address, and also the item you're addressing.
Good evening, Marie Groek, 183 Lillian Road, Wisconsin. The Storybook Homes. We brought this issue up several times already. You said that you were going to look at it, look into it, the last meeting. I'd like to know why it's being recessed again.
That's a good question. It, this application-
This is going on six years now.
This predates my, my membership on this board.
Right.
It's something I spoke to Director Flynn about. He has reached out to the applicant and expressed the board's desire that we would like to address and move on this application, one way or the other. I think 2012 is enough time for them to either decide they wish to proceed, withdraw, amend, or do whatever with the application. And Allison Murray, our principal planner from the department, if you have any other updates on this?
A letter went out to the applicant today stating that the board would like to act on this at its next meeting, and that if the applicant wishes to be heard or provide additional testimony, to please let us know as soon as possible so that we can schedule a hearing.
Okay, because this is going on six years now. This coming June will be six years. We have to either close it or do something, force this hand, because this is ridiculous now.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sir, please come forward, do the same, name, address, and item you're addressing.
Bob Soto, 59 Jeremy Circle, Wisconsin. The same item. When will that letter be addressed? Did you give him a time limit?
We indicated that the board was going to be acting on it at its next meeting, which is January 31st. If he wishes to have a public hearing or provide additional testimony, then he would have to let the board know before that point.
How is he going to let you know? Is he going to appear here? Is he gonna, how is it going to be done?
Typically, a phone call, just to the planning department.
So next, at the next meeting, we will know, either way, what's going to happen with this. We expect that.
We, we hope to. Now-
Wait, 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 excuse me. You hope to?
Yes.
Hope doesn't make it. When is this guy going to move on it? It's 2012.
The person comes in, he makes the application, he pays all the appropriate fees. There's nothing we can do to say, okay, there, there's no time limit under the law here.
There, there is no time, so in other words, this can go for 20 years like this?
We've, we've had the other, the applicants other thing in Wisconsin, and that was, that was on the agenda, something like 19 years, it was kicking around.
But that's outrageous. Shouldn't somebody do something to change the law or to, or to force people to act?
The board doesn't make the law. You would have to address that concern to the town council, or I didn't even know that may be preempted by state law.
State legislature. But shouldn't, shouldn't you guys, the planning board, be addressing this for us? We're bringing a complaint here. We want to move on this because-
But we can't break the law.
Nobody's asking you to break the law. We're asked, what I'm asking you is to move on it and to find out-
Well, they sent out a letter. Let's see what comes back by the 31st.
I get it, but that's a bureaucracy. Goes in circles and circles and circles. We come out here every month.
We understand that.
We're going to keep coming out here.
We appreciate that.
We're going to keep worrying about it, and it's not good for any of us.
We agree with you.
It's a bone of contention for the community. This guy is developing lots of parcels of property. We're becoming like queens, and it's a bone of contention, and people are losing sleep over this. Now, we would appreciate it if you guys, if it is your job, to please move on this and get this guy to come here and say something. We want to know what his intentions are. Thank you, thank you very much.
Perhaps they don't know what their intentions are. This is just languished for years, and we don't know.
Well, then, if that's the case, then it should be taken off the calendar.
That's what he's working on right now. We brought it up.
Okay, so there's no time limit as to when this will be resolved. You're going to work on it month after month after month.
The letter was-
You'll continue as long as it takes.
But the letter was just brought up, so that, the letter was just sent out.
Last month, we brought it up, and last month, you told us that you were going to look into it and take care of it.
Right, that was last month.
So today, a letter was sent out.
Yes.
Okay, fine. You guys have all noticed.
David Flynn told me, reached out and spoke to this person's representative about a week or two ago, so I don't know exactly what transpired.
Okay, good, we thank you for that, but we're going to have to keep on coming back here because we're very worried about this. Lot, there's lots at stake, and you know that. You helped us tremendously with this. There's a lot at stake here, and we're very, very worried and concerned about it. So, we're going to just have to keep coming back and keep having this discussion, and it, it doesn't, it's not going to sit well with everyone. But we appreciate you.
I share your concerns, I understand your frustration. I'm the one who brought this up, you know, several months ago. I says, let's start cleaning up some of these items on this agenda. I says, like I said, after all, this predates my membership on this board.
I know that.
And also, sir, just so you're aware, in a hypothetical sense, if the applicant gets back to us and says, I don't want to go forward with that, I'm going to withdraw the application. Fine, that happens. Next week, two weeks, three weeks, he could bring a whole new application on the same property, that's his right.
That's fine.
Just so you're aware.
Then we know where we stand with him. Then we know what he's up to. That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to be heard on any of the items recommended to be recessed this evening? There being none, do we have a motion to recess the items as recommended by the planning department?
Motion to recess items one through 10 as read.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The items are recessed. Under new hearings and decisions, we have Country Point Woods at Smithtown, which is located at Routes 347 and 111.
The applicant requests a six-month extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision known as number 1167, Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown. The final subdivision, number 1167, Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown, received conditional final approval from the planning board on June 14th, 2017. This approval is valid for a period of 180 days that expires on December 11th, 2017. The request was submitted on November 21st, 2017. The planning department has no objection and recommends an extension of six months. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning board resolution number blank 2018, extension of conditional final approval for number 1167, Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of 347 Building Company, LLC, for an extension of conditional final approval for the subdivision, number 1167, Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves the request to extend the conditional final approval for number 1167, Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown, for a period of six months to expire in June 11th, 2018.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Pizzuli for the applicant, with offices at 200 Robbins Lane in Jericho, and thank you, Mr. Collado, for preparing and reading that resolution. I'm pleased to report that we have fulfilled every condition of final approval. Unfortunately, with the exception of one, which is unsurprisingly, the Health Department, where, was still, we just finally, today, got final sign-off on the last revision to the plan for the collection system. We filed our covenants, and we're signing our construction agreement with the DPW, so knowing that, that that could still take another month or two, a six-month extension would be in order.
Okay, any questions from the board? To council? Any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? If not, we have the resolution.
I'll, I'll, I'm sorry.
Please go forward, state your name for the record.
Marie Arjema, 15 Haven Lane in Smithtown. I live, my property borders two sides of the new condos, and I have a couple of questions. Currently, on both sides of my property is a fence that was owned by the prior owners and maintained by them, and I would like to know if that is still the case. And I would like to know if the 50-foot buffer is being still observed, because the equipment that's being used seems like it's getting very, very close to the fence. And those are my two questions. I was wondering if you could answer them.
I could, I could. Mr. Pizzuli can answer your question, and I'll follow up with a comment.
Any fence that belongs to, that belonged to the prior property owner, which is now on our property, will be maintained by us, unless, of course, it needs to be replaced. We have agreed to, to screening provisions on the, on the site plan, and the 50-foot buffer is being maintained. There's, there was a lot of site disturbance activity, and, and there was some old brush and, and undergrowth and tree, and dead tree removal in some of the buffer areas. So I, I know it looks deceiving sometimes, but we have observed that, and we've been inspected by both the planning department and the building department.
I just have another question.
Please, please go forward. Please, sorry.
Everything's being recorded, so-
No, it's actually the same question. I didn't quite understand what you said at the beginning. The fence that's there now. The fence that's there now, on my property, parts of it are not in great shape. Prior to this time, I would call the owners, and they would come. It's a stockade fence, and they would replace the section. Now, is that what you're going to do, or is it going to be my fence, or how is it working?
May I address, Mr. Arjema?
Yes, please, yes, please, sir.
Is it yours, is it your fence you're speaking about?
No, it's your fence.
Or the fence?
We'll replace it. Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Now, also, there was a tree plan, preservation plan, which I reviewed about a month ago.
Right.
I have not been back to the property. I've walked that property several times, but I haven't been back there since it's been cleared. And we will make sure that they follow and preserve the trees that have been marked. They actually have a whole list of the trees.
Right, they've, they've done that, it looks okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Peter Hans has done that inspection with DEW.
Okay, all right. Anyone else wish to be heard on this?
I'm sorry, let me hand up the affidavit of posting. I'm glad you could do that.
Anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? If not, we have the resolution before us granting the extension.
In the matter of number 1167, Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed, and on the resolution-
In the matter of number 1167, Map of Country Point Woods at Smithtown, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Extension granted.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a performance bond extension for Fieldstone Estates in Kings Park.
The request is to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision known as, known as number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, for a period of two years, to expire on October 3rd, 2018. The applicant received conditional final approval for this 11-lot subdivision from the planning board on May 7th, 2014. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $203,100 was approved by the board and subsequently signed by the chairman. The town board accepted the bond on October 3rd, 2014. The approved performance period of the performance bond expired on October 3rd, 2016. The applicant has indicated that they need more time to complete the public improvements and comply with the Long Island workforce housing. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the request. The traffic safety department has no comment. The planning department has no objection to the request. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning board resolution number blank 2018, extension of performance period of the performance bond, number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Fieldstone Development Group, LLC, to retroactively extend the performance period of the performance bond for number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, for a period of two years. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance period of the performance bond for the subdivision known as number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, for a period of two years, to expire on October 3rd, 2018.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I've submitted the affidavit of posting and photograph to Matt. We ask the board to accept the recommendation of the planning department to extend the bond. Any questions from the board? Any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? There being none, do we have a motion to close the hearing and adopt?
In the matter of number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed, and on the resolution itself.
In the matter of number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. Under waiver request for Fieldstone Res, Fieldstone Estates in Kings Park regarding the issue of workforce housing.
The applicant is requesting to change the location of a required workforce housing unit from Lot 1 to another lot in Kings Park, self-accounting tax map number 819 to 26.1. The applicant then sold the dwelling on Lot 1 at market rate. The subdivision known as number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, is subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act because it contains five or more lots and is being developed at the maximum density permitted by the zoning ordinance. To ensure compliance with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act, subsequent to issuing final approval of the subdivision on December 17th, 2014, the planning board adopted a resolution designating Lot 1 of Fieldstone Estates for affordable workforce housing in compliance with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. The applicant is requesting to switch the lot on which the workforce housing is constructed from Lot 1 to an 8,000-square-foot lot in San Remo. The San Remo lot is located on the west side of Locust Drive, approximately 192 feet north of St. Johnlin Road in San Remo, Kings Park. The lot is located in the R10 zoning district. It is only 8,000 square feet. However, on December 13th, 2016, the Board of Zoning Appeals approved the lot area variance to reduce the minimum lot area from 10,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet for a proposed 1,647-square-foot two-story dwelling with a 233-square-foot attached garage. The Long Island Workforce Housing Act affords the town and the builder flexibility in determining how and where workforce housing units should be constructed. The Act provides three alternatives. They are, one, they set aside at least 10% of the units for affordable housing on-site; two, the provision of other land and the construction of the required affordable workforce housing units that are not part of the applicant's current subdivision plat or site plan but are to be provided on another site within the same local government; three, the payment of a fee for each additional unit that resulted from the bonus density. Additionally, Section 699-A1 of New York State General Municipal Law requires that the affordable workforce housing units to be of consistent design to those of the rest of development. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the request. The traffic safety department has no comment. The planning department has reviewed the attributes of both sites and offers the following comparison for the board's consideration. For Lot 1, the lot area is 16,085 square feet. The maximum house size is 4,021 square feet. The school district is Kings Park. It's .9 miles from the train station and .9 miles from bus routes. It's four minutes to the nearest access highway, Suncom Meadow Parkway. It has public water, electric gas, for utilities. It's 230 feet above sea level, no environmental constraints, and the site is one mile from entrance to the Suncom Meadow State Park. And the San Remo lot is 8,000 square feet. Maximum house size is 2,000 square feet. School district is Kings Park. It's 2.3 miles from the train station, .9 miles from the bus routes, seven minutes from the Suncom Meadow Parkway, has public water, electric gas, 40 feet above sea level, no environmental constraints, and the site is in the local waterfront area and is approximately 700 feet from the Nessawag River. The planning department has no objection to this request due to the fact that the proposal is consistent with the character of the neighborhood, with the understanding that the visual quality of the workforce housing unit be consistent with the visual quality of the houses in the subdivision. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning board resolution number blank 2018, amendment of conditional final approval for number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates. Whereas the planning board has considered the request to substitute the workforce housing unit on Lot 1 in the above referenced subdivision, self-accounting tax map number 19-2-26.1, in order to satisfy the requirements of the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. Now therefore be it first resolved that in the matter of number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, self-accounting tax map number 19-2-26.1 is designated for affordable workforce housing pursuant to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act and in replacement of Lot 1 in the subdivision, number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, subject to the following conditions. A, self-accounting tax map number 19-2-26.1 shall be developed and conveyed perpetuity in compliance with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act and the town of Smithtown affordable workforce housing policy. B, the property owner shall file a declaration of covenants and restrictions in the office of the Suffolk County clerk in a form approved by the town attorney agreeing to maintain self-accounting tax map number 19-2-26.1 in compliance with the Long Island Workforce Housing Act and the town of Smithtown affordable workforce housing policy. And C, the town shall not release the performance bond for number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, to the aforementioned covenant that has been filed and a certificate of occupancy has been issued for the dwelling on Suffolk County Tax Map number 19-2-26.1. D, the affordable workforce housing unit shall be of consistent design to the houses constructed on Fieldstone Court within the subdivision. The design includes, but is not limited to, exterior building material, trim, fenestration, et cetera.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. Just to reiterate briefly, we did get a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The positioning of the house from the Nessawag River is going to be really unique, as you're going to have a water view. The, the person who ultimately buys that house will have a water view of the Nessawag River. Obviously, we have to conform to all the covenants and restrictions that will be put on the house with respect to resale. So we ask the board to follow the recommendation of the planning department and grant us the substitution of lots, and, thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes, we're, Mr. Tramarko, when you say there's going to be a view, is that from the lot, prior Lot 1, or from the substituted lot?
No, from the new lot, from the substituted.
And what's on that lot right now? Is that vacant?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one, one question. When the initial application went through, workforce housing obviously was in place, but they was already set up for Fieldstone Estates. It wasn't, this wasn't set up where they were going to do a land swap, so they went and got this thing approved, and then they decided to do this after the fact?
Um, yeah, I guess, you know, they, they didn't really think about it initially. The workforce housing, you heard the three parameters, and I think this is good not only for my client, but good for the ultimate buyer of the subject house, because he'll have, he and she, or will have a, a water view walk, I think it's about 1,100 feet from the Nessawag River. It's all downhill, and it's, it'll be a benefit.
So you're saying, Mr. Tramarko, if this amendment is approved, you'll be able to sell Lot 1 on the original subdivision at market rate?
Right.
And there'd be an additional approval in the other community, because they would have a new house constructed there, which could be a benefit to that community as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Do they have a rough, I mean, obviously, it's, what is it, 1400 square feet? For, for the new property?
Eight thousand.
Well, at the maximum, I think it's-
It does square for property, then this is the maximum.
Do they have a value of what they're going to sell the house for, the one in San Remo?
They're restricted. I, I don't know exactly, but I think it's in the $350,000 range. It's based upon the income of the-
Perspective buyer, right.
Yes, absolutely. So, whatever they want to do is, is all controlled. And additionally, the covenant that's on the property doesn't allow, let's say I bought it, I can't sell it for more than a certain percentage, so that a speculator wouldn't be able to buy that and make money. It would be for someone that qualifies for the workforce housing, even in the future.
And that's the intent of it?
Yes, absolutely. I think it goes for 10 years with restrictions, so. All right. Any members of the public have any questions, comments on this matter? There being none, do we have a motion?
In the matter of number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
In the matter of number 1154, Map of Fieldstone Estates, move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted. The next item on the agenda is Archer Hills.
This waiver request was last heard at the November 1st, 2017, planning board meeting. The planning board recessed the matter to December 13th, 2017, meeting in order to perform an onsite inspection. The applicant then requested the matter be recessed at the January 10th, 2018 meeting. The planning department provided a report dated October 26th, 2017, to the planning board on November 1st, 2017, discussing the background of the application and reviewed the applicant's request. Subsequently, the planning department recommended the planning board approve the waiver request to reasons presented in the October 26th, 2017 memorandum. After performing onsite inspections, the chairman asked the planning department to prepare an alternate resolution that conditioned approval of the waiver upon planting additional vegetation at the base of the retaining wall. As such, we prepared the following alternate resolution for the board's consideration. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning board resolution number blank 2018, waiver requests of prior planning board resolution dated December 17th, 2014, for number 299, Map of Archer Hills. Whereas the planning board has considered the request of Stephen DeMarco to waive Condition C of the planning board resolution dated December 17th, 2014, within the subdivision known as number 299, Map of Archer Hills. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board hereby waives Condition C of the planning board resolution dated December 17th, 2014, within the subdivision known as number 299, Map of Archer Hills, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall plant nine three-foot-high shrubs, three feet in front of the inkberry bushes planted at the base of the retaining wall. The shrubs shall be spaced no more than five feet apart in between the inkberry bushes. The shrubs shall be mountain laurel and/or American holly. Two, the plantings shall be installed with six months, within six months subsequent to the effective date of this resolution. And three, the applicant shall notify the planning department once the shrubs have been installed, and shall obtain written approval from the planning department that the plantings were completed in accordance with these conditions. Second resolved that this waiver is granted for the following reasons. One, the applicant has planted a dense row of evergreens inside the fence line that effectively One, the applicant has planted a dense row of evergreens inside the fence line that effectively screen it from view. Two, the fence is a black-coated chain link which allows it to blend in with the surrounding environment. Therefore, moving it to the other side of the planted evergreens would have little to no visual benefit to passerby on St. Johnland Road. Three, due to its proximity, the visual impact of the fence is exacerbated by the two-tiered retaining wall. The additional plantings between the tiers of the retaining wall will mitigate the visual impact of the walls and fence on the public. Third resolve that all other conditions of the December 17, 2014 Planning Board Resolution remain applicable and in full force and effect, and restrictive covenant shall be put, shall be modified to reflect conditions 1 through 3 in the first resolved clause.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I know this board has worked long and hard on reviewing this matter. As Mr. Collado said, we planted trees and we did whatever we could to mitigate any views from 25A to the back of the property. So we ask the Board to favorably approve the application as recommended by the Planning Department. Thank you.
Any questions? Any members of the public wish to be heard on this matter? There being no public comment and no questions?
I just have one quick comment. In the reasons under the second resolved clause, Number 3 should say that the additional plantings at the base of the retaining wall opposed to in between the tiers of the retaining wall.
Okay. Can you just restate that so we can get that on the record?
Sure. For the second resolved clause that this waiver is granted for the following reasons, Number 3, due to its proximity, the visual impact of the fence is exacerbated by the two-tiered retaining wall. The additional plantings at the base of the retaining wall will mitigate the visual impact of the walls and the fence on the public.
So we strike between the tiers and replace that with at the base?
Correct.
We, in accordance on that? Okay. There being no public comment or questions, does we have a motion to close the hearing?
In the matter of Number 299 Map of Archer Hills, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed and on the resolution.
In the matter of Number 299 Map of Archer Hills, I move that we adopt the resolution as read and as the second resolve, Number 3 is amended to read plantings at the base of the tiers.
Second to the resolution as modified.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Laura Park in Wisconsin, a waiver request regarding fence and plantings.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Sean Zoll on behalf of John Loretto, property owner who made the application. And we did have a meeting in my office. Unfortunately, it was not successful. So I guess at this point, the board will make a, or the Planning Department make the recommendation and then the board will take whatever action they feel is appropriate on that.
Okay. Well, you, you were certainly diligent in trying to resolve this issue.
Tried and neighbors here, we did try. Sometimes things happen.
Okay.
So we'll see what happens after this. You never know. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone who, any members of the board have any questions? Counsel? If not, I'll open it up to the members, the public present to question or comment. Anyone wish to be heard on this matter? No, I hear nobody's interested in commenting, so therefore is there a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of Number 818 Map of Laura Park, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed and on the resolution as read.
In the matter of Number 818 Map of Laura Park, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is adopted.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your patience with the board. And if I just might, our separate matter, Lisetta Court, Lisetta Street, 280 application, that was adjourned.
Yes.
Did they give it a date yet? It was going to February?
Hopefully, it was given a date.
No, we didn't hear it. It would be on the next meeting's agenda.
Could we put that, if it's possible, into the meeting after that?
All right.
I don't think it was given a date at all.
No.
Adjourn without a date.
Okay, that's fine.
So if we want to, if somebody wants to make a motion to amend the...
No, adjourn without date is fine.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Final subdivision of Angelo's, Platt, and St. James.
I think Hobson.
Did we miss Hobson?
Number 16.
I have two agendas here. We have a revised agenda. I'm working with my working copy.
Sorry about that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Hobson, Garden, St. James, between Hobson Avenue and Park Avenue.
The applicant is requesting preliminary approval to subdivide a 2.62 acre parcel into four lots. The preliminary subdivision known as Number 1168 Map of Hobson Garden is comprised of three tax lots. There's an existing home and two barns on Lot 3, all of which will be maintained. The site is split zone R10 and R21. Suffolk County Tax Map Number 885-235 and 38 are located in R10 zoning. Suffolk County Tax Map Number 885-237.1 is located in R21 zoning. The site has 380 feet of frontage on Hobson Avenue, 162 feet of frontage on Park Avenue, and 200 feet of frontage on the Paper Street, Pine Street. The applicant is proposing to have three houses front Hobson Avenue and one house front Park Avenue. The applicant is also proposing, at the engineering and highway department's request, to extend the pavement of Park Avenue approximately 60 feet and construct a turnaround with a 50-foot radius. Topography of the site is relatively flat, ranging from 130 feet to 133 feet above sea level. The site contains no steep slopes, no high groundwater, and no wetlands or natural surface water features. Section 248-31B2 of the subdivision regulations mandate that subdivisions be clustered if certain conditions are present. Three conditions are present in this subdivision. One, prime agricultural soil. The Suffolk County Soil Survey identifies soil type on this property is Haven Loam, which is in Capability Class 2. Two, mature woodlands. There are approximately 2.1 acres of mature woodlands on the property. Three historic resources listed in the Historic Sites Inventory of the Town of Smithtown. The Olson House circa 1905, which is the existing house on the property to be maintained and is listed on the town's historic inventory. The Planning Department recommends clustering by preserving the historic house, which is being proposed, and by placing a conservation easement on the northern portion of Lot 4. This helps preserve approximately 38 trees and prime agricultural soil. All four lots conform to the minimum lot area requirement for the R21 zoning district. However, the applicant will request a final plat approval, a front yard, at final plat approval, a front yard setback variance for Lot 1 from 50 feet to 36 feet for the existing house. The Planning Department will likely recommend approval of this variance because it helps preserve a historic resource. It appears the proposal has a density that is less than permitted by the zoning ordinance and therefore is not subject to Long Island Workforce Housing Act. If the applicant were to subdivide this property into five lots, they would be subject to Long Island Workforce Housing. The Planning Department recommends that the right-of-way along Hobson Avenue be widened so that the property line is 25 feet from the center line of Hobson Avenue. This dedication will result in the need of a front yard setback variances for lots 1, 2, and 3, and a minimum lot area variance for Lot 2. The Hobson Avenue right-of-way ranges from 20 feet to 34 feet adjacent to the subdivision, whereas the standard right-of-way width for residential streets is 50 feet. The dedication benefits the public by facilitating street trees and utilities. The Planning Board has the authority to grant such variance pursuant to Section 322-30.4 of the zoning ordinance during final plat approval. The engineering and highway departments have reviewed the preliminary subdivision and have found it acceptable. The traffic safety department has reviewed the preliminary subdivision and has found it acceptable and concurs with the Planning Department on widening the Hobson Avenue right-of-way. The Department of Environment and Waterways finds the tree preservation and land clearing plan acceptable. They recommend a secret negative declaration as well as conditions to be imposed at the time of final plat approval regarding land clearing. The following resolution is recommended for Number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, recommend a secret declaration for Number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens, whereas the Planning Board has considered the secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways. Now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, issue a secret negative declaration, determination of non-significance. An EIS is not necessary. In the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Carmine Zocalillo for Number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soil properties, no high groundwater, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. E, the project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Elizabeth G. McCoken, licensed land surveyor dated September 17, 2017, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing, mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing, and around any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained and placed by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, subdivision preliminary approval for Number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens, whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Carmine Zocalillo for preliminary approval to subdivide a 2.62 acre parcel into four lots. Now therefore be it first resolved. The Planning Board hereby approves the preliminary subdivision Number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens subject to the following conditions. A, the right-of-way located on Hobson Avenue be widened so that the property line is 25 feet from the center line of Hobson Avenue. B, in order to comply with Section 248-31B2 of the subdivision regulations, a conservation easement shall be placed on the northern portion of Lot 4. And second resolve that the preliminary approval shall be valid for a six-month period to expire on July 10, 2018.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I've submitted the affidavit of posting and picture to Matt Collado. The only thing we have a little concern, excuse me, is about the location of the proposed cluster area. One of the things that I know this board knows, and I guess Allison and Matt know, that the Planning Department, specifically Dave Flynn, is working on a modification of this cluster ordinance as it applies to these small lots. So as we respect the recommendation of the Planning Department and are happy that they recommended approval, our concern is that probably, more likely than not, an ordinance will happen between preliminary and final, which I think everybody in planning agrees. And as long as we're clear that if that's the case, or we can come up with some other clustering that makes more sense, I have no problem with the granting of the subdivision.
Okay. I, my only concern, and I have to check with staff or counsel, is that once we do the preliminary, we seem to be almost locked into a plan and altering it based on some future change in legislation that may or may not happen, cause us a problem later on.
Well, I would think if the law changed, we do a preliminary now and the law changed between now and the final, and at the time of the final, it's better decided by the board that it's better to have an amendment in the law that allows it. I don't see any problem with that, but counsel wants to...
My question was, you know, would this be considered a significant change? And at that point, I was told if we do a preliminary, we're pretty much locked in in certain respects. And I would hate to see, you know, Mr. Tramarko and his client lose that opportunity to have this adjusted.
Sure. I'll leave it to counsel to give an opinion on that. The condition of approval does not ask for a, you know, any covenant to be filed with the county clerk's office, so it's not something that would have to, you know, that's not something that would have to be modified.
You know what? I'm going to make it easy for the board. I really don't know where this conservation easement is. I called Matt today and it was hard for him to explain it to me, or it was hard for me to understand him. That's probably more likely the scenario. So maybe we could adjourn this just to the next meeting, so...
We'll give it two weeks.
And also then the issue of a subsequent change in the law and how binding the preliminary would be on us could be researched.
Right.
We'll have a little bit more information when we act on it.
That's right.
All right.
So if that's okay with the chairman?
Certainly, that's fine. I'm just, I want you to keep your options open in this because I understand, you know, your situation here and I'm somewhat sympathetic.
Okay, thank you.
So anybody wish to be heard on this matter? Gentlemen?
I just got one quick question.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
The barn that's listed in the back, would that require variance? We have distance on that?
Good evening.
On Lot 1?
I'm sorry. We have one of the members have a question.
For Lot 1, the property that's staying, it has two barns in the back, so furthest barn, will that need a variance for distance to Lot 2?
I have to look at the map.
It's this one here.
Here, here's the map here.
It's not the, there's two barns in the back, not the one on the right, the one on the left.
It would not require...
Because it looks like the property line, it looks like it's, I mean, I can't tell the distance.
Oh, it, good question. It would not require a variance to the rear property line?
But on to Lot 2?
It may, yes, require a variance to Lot 2, yes.
On one side.
It has to be at least six feet, I believe, six or eight feet from the side property line.
I mean, this could be? I mean, who knows?
No, it reads, the...
I can't tell.
The closest corner of it is 2.3 feet from the property line.
So we have to file for a variance of that as well, to keep the barn?
The board, at the time of final plat approval, could approve that variance.
Okay.
Okay. Sir, please proceed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Edward Fleming. I live at 28 Park Avenue. My one concern is basically drainage going down into that dead end on Park Avenue and the Paper Street, Pine, as it has been or will be called again. At the present time, all of the runoff from Lake Avenue ends up down at that end of the street, from Patrick Way all the way down to Park and then the full length of Park. So the town has put in extensive drains, but at the present time, they still take time to take the excess water away. I'm just concerned that any of the construction that's going to be done facing Park or this cul-de-sac that's going to be off of Park will add to that problem because everything ends up in my backyard.
All right. And you're adjacent to this?
Yeah. The other thing is there is a small cottage which is right next to part of this development. My wife is the owner of that. Is there anything that's going to be done with that small piece of property that's in between? I think there's like a 50-foot by 200-foot-long section.
That looks like it's the Pine Street, that's not...
So you're on the south, are you on the south side of Park?
Yes, I am.
So, yeah, that's part of Lot 4, and I don't, on the survey, I don't see any cottage. I'd say they're going to remove it.
Well, they can't because I, my wife owns it.
Is there anything on it?
No, it's the, I think it's the Paper Street they're talking about, right?
The Paper Street is on the north side.
Right.
And goes to Grove.
Okay, and here's Grove up here, yes.
Grove over here.
I mean, they're constructing on their property, so.
Well, there is a vacant piece of property that's not part of Lot 4, within that cul-de-sac area. Are you saying that there's a, there's something on that piece of property?
No, we have a piece of property that's, it goes back to the 30s and it's got a small, small building on it. Adjacent to that, going into this development, is another piece of property that's, I don't whether it's either 50-foot or 75-foot.
That, that piece of property, the one next to the cottage, part of the house will be, they're proposing to construct part of the house on that.
We also have an aerial photograph here if you would like to take a look.
It might be easier.
Here's Park Avenue.
I see that, yep.
Looks like your home is here. Yeah.
That's my house. That would be the cottage right there.
Right.
So part of the house will be constructed on that.
On this?
Yes. But it won't be on this.
And again, again, from the dead end on Park to the developing property, there is about a two-and-a-half-foot rise from Park to this new section. So that will create another little problem.
For drainage.
Yeah.
So subdivisions, one of the aspects of subdivisions is drainage. Plans are submitted to the engineering department and they are reviewed, and they're probably better to talk to, but based on, first off, they don't make any recommendation until it's...
it's, they think it's 100% acceptable. And they do have additional pools that the applicant's gonna, they're gonna turn into a turnaround, and they are adding additional pools to, you know...
Into that subdivision?
Yes.
But they will not be tied into the existing ones that are on Pine Street?
I believe they are. So there's, yes, they are tied into the existing ones.
Then, I think that they should extend the drainage field.
They are planned, they are extending the field. There's going to be, from what we can see here, one, two, three, four...
Is that on the cul-de-sac, or is that on Pine Street?
That's on the cul-de-sac, tied into Pine Street.
Okay, but then Pine Street itself should have additional, because they're taking all of the rainwater off a lake.
What we can suggest, at this point, the board is not going, is not approving the specific drainage details. That's something that would be addressed during final approval. The engineering department has to work out all the details between now and the time of final plat approval. I would recommend probably, maybe you writing a letter to the engineering department. We can also express that sentiment to the engineering department, so that they're aware that there is additional, additional problems that would be connected to the system.
Okay. And also, on that small cottage area, the adjacent parcel, will that have any kind of buffer or something to maintain some kind of privacy along there? That section that'd be, that's just off the cul-de-sac?
The applicant has submitted a tree preservation plan, which shows that they are not intending to remove any trees adjacent to that cottage. They would have the ability to, the right to, once the property was subdivided, and if somebody moved in and they decided that they wanted to remove those trees, there's nothing proposed at this point that would preserve that area. That might be something that you can discuss, either the board can address that, or the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just got a quick question for you on the drainage. So you're saying, so Lake Avenue drains towards the cul-de-sac, or is the cul-de-sac drained out towards Lake Avenue?
No. Lake Avenue, from Patrick Way to Lake, to Park Avenue, runs downhill. And from the corner of Park and Lake, it runs downhill to the dead end.
And which is gonna be down into the future cul-de-sac?
It's gonna be just before the cul-de-sac, because the cul-de-sac is gonna be up and then put in. There's a, if you see the picture that they have, there shows a small break, and then the cul-de-sac.
Right. So you're saying that there, so you're, there's gonna be a belly between Park and the cul-de-sac, because it's gonna come up?
Right. And then the drainage field goes north onto that Paper Street.
Okay. I'm sure they're gonna, or I guess they'll have to put something in there, or somebody has to put something in as far as...
Well, they got four schedules already.
Because you can't have a belly if you're gonna create a leak.
Well, according to the thing, they've got their four rings in the cul-de-sac, but they're piping that back into Pine.
I got you, okay.
How much can it take? Yeah, right.
And again, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard? Sir, please go forward.
Hi, my name is Jeff Gorok. I live at 30 Heidi Court South. Having not seen a visual of the site plan, I'm just curious how far that cul-de-sac sits from Hobson.
You could provide some assistance.
Take, look at the plans if you'd like. So, South Heidi is right, Heidi Court South is here. This is the existing house, Park Avenue. It's only been extended, I think it was about 50 feet or so.
No, I just want you to show me this here, so you can just turn this around this way. Okay, that's all I wanted to see. That's the existing house.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, is the packet on the website?
Um, we don't put it there.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any questions, comments? We have a motion, then? Are we, council's requesting we adjourn?
Adjourn, go ahead.
January 31st. Okay. And hopefully, at that point, we can resolve, you know, your concerns.
The tree wasn't there, still.
In the matter of number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens, I move that we recess the public hearing to the January 31, 2018, meeting of the planning board.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The hearing is recessed. Okay, next item on the agenda is Core Land Division, and we have received a letter from council indicating his desire to recess this until a date certain, in February. I assume by then, hopefully, he will be ready to make his case before the board. So we will recess that, his motion to recess Core Land Division, Kings Park. Pardon me?
Yes.
Yes, it's right after this one.
It's after this one.
Well, the letter that's sent in by Donald J. King, dated January 30, 2018, asks for a date for the time of February. It might be appropriate to pick a date in February.
February 14 is our date.
14th is the meeting.
That'll be the one.
In the matter of number 1169 Core Land Division, Kings Park, I move that we recess the public hearing to the February 14, 2018, meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It is recessed. Next item on the agenda.
This subdivision application was first read at the December 13, 2017, planning board meeting. The planning department read a background, review, and recommendation for the subdivision into the record. The matter is recessed to January 10, 2018, in order to revise the wording for the conservation easement. In accordance with the board's request, the planning department has prepared revised wording for the easement in condition F below. Following resolution is recommended for number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018: Recommended Secret Declaration for number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat, whereas the planning board has considered the secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways, now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board, after due study and deliberation of the subject record, issue a secret negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, and EIS is not necessary in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Matthew Angelos for Angelos Plat number 1176 for the following reasons: A. The proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code; B. The parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soil properties, no high groundwater, and no unmanageable slopes; C. The small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment; D. The proposal appears to be, did I read that one, D? D. The proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses; E. The project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Frank S. Ferantello, licensed professional surveyor, and dated October 3, 2017, provide for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing, mesh construction fencing, along all limits of clearing, and around any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The planning department recommends approval and offers the following resolutions for the board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018: Final Plat variance for number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat, whereas the planning board has considered the request of Matthew Angelos for the following variance on lot one pursuant to Section 322-30.4 of the Building Zone Ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat. Now therefore be it first resolved that the planning board of the Town of Smithtown hereby grants a variance from the Building Zone Ordinance of the Code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat as follows and below is the modification of dimensional requirements. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018: Subdivision Final Approval for number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat, whereas the planning board has considered the request of Matthew Angelos to subdivide one acre into two lots, now therefore be it first resolved that the final plat of number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat is hereby approved, subject to the following conditions: A. Posting of a performance bond in the form and amount specified by a separate resolution of the planning board, and for a term of two years; B. Posting of a general liability insurance policy to run concurrently with the term of the performance bond, and in accordance with other provisions of Section 248 of the Code of the Town of Smithtown subdivision regulations; C. Payment of an inspection fee in cash deposit as established by a separate resolution of the planning board; D. Payment of a park fee of $3,000; E. Final approval of drainage or regrading plans to the satisfaction of the town engineer; F. A five-foot-wide conservation easement shall be placed along the side and rear property lines on lots one and two. No structures except fences shall be permitted in this easement. However, the property owner shall be allowed to mow, landscape, and maintain the property covered by the easement. G. Prior to the commencement of construction activities at the subject parcel, including land clearing and other site preparation work, the applicant shall abide by the following conditions: One, all limits of clearing and any individual trees to be preserved within the clearing areas must be marked with snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing. Said fencing shall be located no closer to the trunk of any tree to be preserved than the drip line of said tree. This area to be preserved shall be, as indicated in the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Frank S. Ferantello, licensed professional surveyor, dated October 3, 2017. Two, upon completion of the installation of fencing as required above, the applicant shall provide written notice to the Department of Environment and Waterways requesting inspection of the limits of clearing as marked in the field by cited fencing. Three, the applicant shall not commence construction activities, including land clearing or other site preparation work, until the marked limits of clearing are approved in writing by the Environmental Protection Director. Four, the snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing used to delineate the limits of clearing shall be maintained in place by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. Second resolve, that the chairman of the planning board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, thereby approving said plat after the town board has accepted a performance bond of satisfactory form and amount. Third resolve, that the planning, that the conditional final approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution, and within 62 days after the chairman of the planning board signs the final map of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded by the owner in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. And Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018: Authorization to sign performance bond estimate for number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat, whereas the town departments of engineering, traffic safety, highway, and planning have prepared a performance bond estimate to cover the cost of all required public improvements. Now therefore be it first resolved that the chairman of the planning board is authorized to sign the performance bond estimate for number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat in the amount of $12,462, and establish an inspection fee of $997, and a cash deposit of $1,000. Therefore, the amount of the performance bond to be posted with the town shall be $11,462.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I've heard the recommendation of the planning department, and we agree with it. We asked the board to accept the recommendation. Only, I didn't hear whether the variance fee was waived or not. I think it was. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for that. That's it.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Any members of the public wish to be heard? Comment? There being none, we can wrap this up.
In the matter of number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And in the matter of number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat, I move that we adopt the secret negative declaration as recommended by the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The resolution's adopted, and?
And in the matter of, and, I think we have to do the variances, okay. In the matter of the, of number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat, I move that we approve the variances as listed in the table of modifications.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And in the matter of number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And in the matter of number 1176 Map Evangelist Plat, I move that we approve the performance bond estimate as recommended by the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Performance bond is approved. That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Final, we're all done?
The minutes.
Do you want a motion on the minutes?
Yes.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the November 15, 2017, and December 13, 2017, meetings of this board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are adopted. Our next meeting will be January 24, followed by February 14.
January 31st.
31st, I'm sorry. 31st and February 14, just for the record, and our schedule is available on the town website for those who wish to avail themselves of the entire year.
So a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.